All right, it's 5:30. And I will call this meeting of the Lubbock City Council a special called meeting to order. And we are going to recess now into executive session for the purpose of consulting with our city staff regarding deliberation regarding security devices and/or security audits related to information resources, technology, and critical infrastructure under Section 551.089 of the Texas Government Code. So we are now recessed into executive session. We will return afterwards. All right. We'll now reconvene in open session at 5:51. And we will begin our special meeting with citizen comments, which we always allow for by these rules. Any citizen wishing to appear may do so on, speak to any matter posted on our agenda, signing up before the meeting begins. And we have several that signed up today. And so this is opportunities for you to express an opinion on an item on our agenda. So we will begin now with citizen comments. The first person I will call for it is Jeffrey Page. And after Jeffrey, it will be Stephanie Smith. So just let you know who's coming up next.
My name is Jeffrey Page. I'm a citizen in Lubbock. I'm rising in opposition to the 3.2. The impact fees and everything like that on the developers, I think they should be raised. I mean, because the impact fee where I'm living out, I live off Upland. And the building out there, since I've moved into that area there, it's just exploded. And if they're, you know, now you're going to pass it on, we already have road bonds for Upland and for 66th and all this other stuff. Well, you're just passing all this stuff on to the taxpayers for more taxes. You know, you're talking about impact fees. Well, if you know Michael Ward, fees are not fees, they're taxes. So if you're just going to push it from the developers who are developing all along Upland, all the way up to Forest Street, just as in the road bond that you already have set up for it, I think they should pay a lot more than what they're getting right now, especially Beaton Bow and all those. They should get, they should be paying more. But that's a lot of money that we're going to be spending and a lot of taxes on all the residents around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Ms. Smith, and after Ms. Smith, Chris Berry.
My name is Stephanie Smith, and I live at 2825 67th Street, District 2. And I'm here for item 3.2, impact fees. Impact fees are income. The city has less income than this last cycle. Any household or business would look to decrease the spending and not decrease income. Since they are applied to reduce the expense needed to build roads, this should be increased to 50%. You have passed bonds to provide roads. The buildings are instigated, the builders have instigated this new expense. Impact fees are a cost doing business for making that decision and rezoning the land for such use. City income does come with property tax, and the council voted no new tax revenue rate. Where's the increase to revenue? Well, you say if the sales tax is down and you want it up, this increase will not affect the road building because the councilman specifically stated sales tax cannot be used for roads. Builders have been deciding to build primarily in districts 5 and 6. If people in districts 5 and 6 want new development, let them pay the impact fees since you're giving preference to new development. You will then see if they want the decision the developer wishes by consenting to do that. New business wanting to open have fees associated with the impact traffic, which varies greatly depending on the location. So many people live in districts 1 through 4, build there. Economic factors are many, supply and demand discretionary income, travel distance. You presented no data to show the direct connection between specific development and the state of the economic economy in Lubbock. Another economic law is the law of diminishing returns. Reducing impact fees has you chasing imaginary benefit. There is no data to show that newly developed property benefit all the Lubbock citizens in small business. Since benefit goes to developers, you are subsidizing the businesses of your choice. If you think the DEI is discriminatory, it seems that this fits the same model. You are discriminating against the Lubbock citizens to pay for the profits of developers. The elephant in the room is that the city council has been conned into this removing impact fees. Please give credibility and honesty to your fiduciary actions, the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Mr. Berry, and after Mr. Berry, Mr. Shankles, sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Chris Berry, 4303-136. I emailed this letter. Hopefully, everybody got it. But I just wanted to read that letter for the record. I'm writing to express my strong support for maintaining the city of Lubbock's current impact fee structure as it stands today, specifically the 25% builder paid ratio established by the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Impact fees are a fair, equitable, and essential tool for funding critical infrastructure like arterial roads, water, and wastewater, ensuring new development pays its share first cost for the demand it generates. The 25% builder paid share has proven to be reasonable and effective contribution without unduly burdening new homeowners or halting development. Some have argued for replacing impact fees with bond financing, but this approach brings substantial risk. Bond funding involves lengthy uncertain process requiring public approval, legal compliance, and often multi-year delays. During that time, inflation and rising construction costs can significantly erode the real impact of these dollars, leading to project downsizing, postponement, or even cancellation. In contrast, impact fees that are collected at the time of permit can be allocated more quickly to infrastructure projects, ensuring timely delivery and better coordination with growth. They provide the city with a stable, dependable revenue stream that allows staff to plan proactively rather than reactively. With today's capability of offering impact fee credits, the city has cost-effective, time-efficient tool to partner with private developers to build and extend capital infrastructure. This public-private model allows necessary infrastructure to be delivered in tandem with development, often ahead of schedule and below public sector cost averages. It incentivizes coordinated investment and ensures the infrastructure network grows responsibly alongside our community. Improved thoroughfares yield measurable economic benefits. They support property value and appreciation, business attraction, workforce mobility, reduce transportation costs, and safer, more accessible communities. Cities that invest in well-planned road networks position themselves for long-term success, attracting employees and growing the tax base in a fiscally responsible way. Setting impact fees at $0 will not only remove a key funding mechanism, it would also signal an unsustainable shift in infrastructure cost to existing taxpayers. In a time when inflation and public service demands are rising, we must not jeopardize Lubbock's ability to fund roads and utilities that growth requires. I respectfully urge the council to consider the CAC proposed 75%, 25%. This approach balances fairness, fiscal responsibility, and growth readiness for the city of Lubbock. Thank you for your leadership and your continued investment in a stronger Lubbock. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Shankles, and after Mr. Shankles, Latrell Joy.
Good afternoon, Council. Joshua Shankles, I live in the 2600 block of 47th Street. I am bringing a handout to you. That is an annotated version of the Impact Fee Study Committee's presentation that refutes almost every single claim that they make on their document. Not that I needed to, because I spent 30 minutes pre-refuting almost every single claim that they advanced here, except for perhaps the claim that Mr. McClendon advanced, which was, isn't it awful that the impact fees will obligate the city to spend the money collected on them in 10 years? And to which I say, no, it's not. What we can see evidently is that your city could be run by people who aren't interested in evidence and facts, and that you do want to obligate future councils to spend the money according to how it has been laid out. Council, I have not heard a single refutation of any argument we have advanced for you, and nothing but refutations of the arguments that the developers have advanced. I do not know why we are not considering implementing impact fees as it has been recommended to you by your own committee. I want to remind you that the impact fees are not dragging on sales tax. Our city's economy was cooking harder than it ever had been in 2021, 2022, 2023. It was only in November of this year that our economy started to fall off with impact fees in place. So you cannot claim that this fall off in sales tax revenue was because of impact fees dragging on the economy. You were presented in the July 22 meeting, a presentation that showed there was no economic fall off from impact fees. There was no loss in permit. There was no downturn in permits from impact fees. You guys have advanced so many falsehoods out there in the public that it makes me really astonished. You guys stand up here and pray every meeting, and then go out there and tell so many dishonesties in the public. It is obscene and embarrassing. Yesterday, we had this big rain event. Had it rained 10 more minutes, we would have had these new businesses that don't even exist. You guys are like, oh, this might impact these new businesses. They don't even exist. A constituency that doesn't even exist may never exist. What's going to happen when we haven't kept up with drainage infrastructure? And now their business is under two foot of water because we've developed so much extra land mass and put it under non-permeable surfaces? What's going to happen then to those new businesses? Not going to make a lot of money then unless they're selling kayaks. What's going to happen to public safety, your number one charge, when you can't get a fire truck or an ambulance out to their new developments because you haven't built the connecting road? Your number one charge is public safety. Yet you're prepared to let it all ride because these guys want you to and you can, yet you have no evidence to support it. It's offensive.
And after Ms. Joy, Mr. Hernandez.
Good afternoon, everyone. It seems we have the perfect storm. You're in budget session. We've been told that we have less money available than when we started on budgets. We have impact fees, and then we had technology and security problems. So I can't imagine anything else that would happen unless it's that the ceiling falls down in here today. I have some thoughts and observations.
Could you pull that mic a little closer to your mouth?
I'm not here to try to convince anybody, but I do have some thoughts. You know, budget season, you set a budget for one year, okay? But everything we do for that one year has implications for future years. And I think this is one of those times when we need to remember that. Impact fees were not experimental. They grew out of the comprehensive plan, which we conducted for the entire city. Every meeting, we had different groups of people who came to talk about what they would like to see do better. Not that they were opposed to things, but what would they like to see better? Even the builders and developers had their own committee that met along with the times that we were having the comprehensive plan. And the impact fees grew out of that discussion. Everybody had input. I went to every meeting we had, and people cared. They wanted things to be better. Impact fees serve a purpose, and that is to try to get our streets and thoroughfares built sooner. Council members were being told, were telling people, I know 130th Street, you guys would like a better road, thoroughfare, but we don't have the money to do it. And so this is one of the mechanisms that you can use that doesn't affect the tax rate, the taxpayers, or the citizens of Lubbock. Some have said they don't understand impact fees. Well, if you don't understand it, go educate yourself because it can be done. We all did it. I am concerned that we did not know about the exemptions and the effect of the exemptions on the monies that were available. I think that needs to be explained. And I am concerned that there was no video of the last meeting. So some of us are kind of having to go by the seat of our pants. But rather than vote on something you don't understand, postpone it and go educate yourselves. I think you'll be surprised. Thank you for your attention and for your service.
Before I start, does everybody have one of these? Do y'all have this? No? Okay, let me give it to you. Oh, you got it. Thank you. Great.
And after Mr. Hernandez will be Will Abercrombie.
Let me know when you're ready, and we can start the time.
And just to address just a comment that Ms. Joy made, the reason we didn't have video available last meeting was because of the issues that we were facing here at City Hall. And you can go look at, you can go watch the meeting, but we were not up live at that time. So this wasn't that we were not wanting people to see what we were doing up here. We just could not broadcast it at that time. Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
All right. Hello, Council. Adam Hernandez, Communications Chair for Lubbock Compact, 820 Main Street. First, thank you to the council members and others who are standing up for the good of the whole city over the greed of a few. There's been lots of focus on the bad because having zero impact fees is such a bad idea for Lubbock. So I want to recognize council members Martinez Garcia, Harris, and Collins. I also want to recognize Thomas Payne, who has continued to advocate for the good of the city over his own bottom line. I think it's important to mention this during this vote that will have such a heavy impact on Lubbock's future. Now, I'd like to make sure Councilman Rose is aware of a few things, because District 4 currently stands to lose the most here, sir. I just wanted to make sure you have all the facts before you make your final decision, because there's a lot on the line, sir, for you in particular. The information you've been given may be inaccurate, including statements by council members Gashin, Wilson, and Mayor McBrayer, and the Impact Fee Task Force. We've debunked all those non-factual statements before today, and you don't have to take our word for it because we provided the official city, state, and federal documents that back it all up. In front of you, you should see a sheet that I provided with a map on it. This shows the service areas A through H overlaid on top of the city council districts to make this a little easier to see. You'll see that service areas A and F, which covers District 5 and 6, have collected about $6.5 million combined since 2021. Service area E, which is almost entirely in District 4, has collected $5.1 million. Voting for 0%, Mr. Rose, is telling your constituents that they should have paid that $5.1 million while developers pay 0 and make more profit. Altogether, impact fees have brought in about $14 million in four years, which is just developers paying a portion of their fair share, not even 50/50. You campaigned on lowering taxes, Mr. Rose, but this would be raising the amount we all pay higher and faster than necessary with more interest. Ask yourself, if you vote to set impact fees to 0 here today, are you ready to explain to your constituents why you felt they needed to pay more taxes than necessary? The other three have already made their decisions, and they're likely to stick to them. Your single vote, Mr. Rose, your single vote, could be the deciding factor here today, will be the deciding factor here today. I hope you'll stand in integrity and stand up for the taxpayers in your district and for the values you campaigned on. The motion for zero impact fees should be voted down, and a motion should be made to accept the CAC committee recommendation as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Will, here, Mr. Abercrombie. And after him, Thomas Payne.
I'm thinking for this opportunity to be able to speak to the city council and the On the drive up here, I was trying to figure out some questions about the impact fees and what they do. I was able to talk to one of your engineers that work for the city. And one, a lot of questions that I got to ask about this. I'm glad that we had Joyce, one of the former city council members, come up here and said, when they looked at this thing, they did their homework. And I don't know if all you guys have done y'all's homework or not. There's a lot of questions you got to ask concerning how much does it cost per mile to build for the developments of the city, you know? And that's one question I have to ask is how much, have y'all done y'all's homework yet? To find out number to say what it costs the city and the taxpayers on this. And I don't think anybody clearly has that number. And that's a sad situation. Our former city council person here comes to us and says, we did a lot of homework. We studied this. We talked to people on both sides of the aisle, and they studied everything. And they come up with saying, positive impact fees is what we need for the city and for the taxpayers. But apparently, some people say a little bit different. I don't know what's changed. We've collected $14.3 million that's helping the taxpayers of this city. I think that's very important, and that's a good number. Now, for the future, that could go up to about $20 million in a five-year period. I'm just throwing that out there. And I know that we've had a shortfall in the city here lately. I think that's where I read the newspaper. So, you know, I think there's another thing that I'd say, just common sense wise. There's a saying here in Texas, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I think the system that we have now is working for the taxpayers. And you guys need to realize this. I appreciate you guys, their being fair judgmental on understanding that we need to work for the taxpayers. And that's what you guys were elected for, not no personal agendas down the line. So you guys need to kind of figure if you're going to work for the taxpayers or you're going to work for somebody else. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Abercrombie. Mr. Payne, and after Mr. Payne, Jordan Wheatley.
Mayor, with your permission, I would request a couple of additional minutes.
Okay, I'll grant those if you need them.
Thank you.
Can you talk fast?
It'll save me from having to speed read.
All right.
And make it easier to understand. The first thing I want to say is that I was involved with impact fees in Lubbock, going back to the original days of the developer, builder, developer council, before the city even embarked on creating impact fees. I was asked to serve, glad to do so. I was elected the first chairman of the Impact Fee Committee. I was the chairman of the committee until fairly recently, maybe a year or so ago, when Chris Berry, who works for Beaton Bow, came onto the committee, and I felt it was time for a change in the chairmanship. And so that occurred, and he was elected the chairman. But I still served on the committee until Friday. And I don't know how many of you are aware. I know there have been a lot of IT problems. I discovered from before the meeting that at least one of you didn't receive my letter. But I sent a letter to all of you and to the city manager and staff on Friday, resigning effective immediately from the Impact Fee Committee. I didn't do so as any, anything that's designed to influence your vote. I did so because the actions of the council last Tuesday placed me in a position of untenable direct and immediate conflict of interest with the city. And so I can't stand up and speak with my city of Lubbock hat on. So now I'm speaking to you as just a regular citizen. With that said, most of y'all campaigned as being for the citizens of Lubbock. I'm very concerned because you talked a lot about being fiscally conservative. And I'll just say that there is a difference between being fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible. The two are not necessarily the same thing. Crippling the city financially, which is what you're in the process of doing, is not responsible. You have serious budget problems. Your plan is to issue bonds going forward. But first, you think it makes sense to do away with your only source of funds outside of the general fund to pay the debt service on those bonds, thereby putting all of the citizens further on the hook. I believe that if you first take money out of the pockets of the citizens unnecessarily, then ask them to support you spending more money to take more money out of their pockets, you will not be able to get support for a bond. Then where will you have left the city? We would be a billion dollars behind building roads by the time another bond might come around. This makes no sense. There is no intelligent reason for eliminating impact fees. The four of you who voted on the 12th to set impact fees to 0 are, as far as I'm concerned, doing this either because you aspire to a higher political office and believe this is the way to get there, or you aspire to get reelected to your current office and believe this is the way to get there, or your voting is instructed by the special interests that you serve, which ties back to A and B above. On August 12, Councilman Gashin stated, "Impact fees are a failed experiment." This is totally misleading. Number one, they were not an experiment at all in any way. Number two, here are some facts. There have been $14 million approximately of impact fees collected to date. Of that, five have been spent, enabling the substantial completion of $26 million of roadway projects in Lubbock, Texas. The remaining $9 million in the bank at the same 5 to 1 ratio will support another $45 million worth of road projects, a total of $71 million. He also stated, "Impact fees have suppressed commercial growth." There is zero evidence of this. If suppressed, it has been the combination of skyrocketing construction costs and the doubling of commercial interest rates post-COVID that is responsible in cities that have impact fees and cities that do not. More than one of you have talked about how complicated impact fees are and how you just do not understand them. How about if you spend the time to understand what you're voting on before you vote to more heavily burden all of the citizens? Is it your plan to do away with everything you do not understand?
You have 30 seconds.
If you do not mess it up tonight, impact fees will be responsible for 100% of the cost of building Quaker Avenue without one penny coming out of the general fund. The dividing line with impact fees is between people all over Lubbock, not in one district, who will never pay any impact fees, and new development, which I believe should at least pay some slightly extra portion of the cost of new development. I acknowledge that doing away with impact fees would be a significant benefit to me personally, but each of us has a greater responsibility than to think only of lining our own pockets. I leave you with this quote from Adam Smith, widely regarded from the 1700s as the father of economics and the father of capitalism. "There is no art which one government sooner learns of another than that of draining money from the pockets of the people." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Wheatley. We're all glad to see you here.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, let's see here. I thought I had a couple slides here. This one. Okay, thank you, guys. Jordan Wheatley, 391700, 14th Street, here in Lubbock, Texas, United States. Here to talk about impact fee, second reading to send roadway impact fees to 0. We represent the four major pro-growth associations here in Lubbock. As you guys know, 4,800 member businesses. I've decided to not really talk about impact fees tonight. I think we beat it to death. And so I'm going to more talk about the future and where we go from here and...
Mr. Rooney's comments should be germane.
I will make that decision. Mr. Shankles, thank you.
So here we go. I think in order to know where you're going, you got to know where you've been in the last 15 years. So a quick timeline here in respect to roadway. So a quick timeline here in respect to roadway infrastructure. 2009, we passed a bond, $43 million. That also includes the green roof fire truck or the fire engine houses. 2020, we had a failed road bond. I will note, there was no PAC there. There was no education on any of that. It was rushed, and it failed dramatically. '21, impact fees started. And then in '22, the Growth Committee rallied together, informed a PAC, and helped pass a $200 million road bond. 68% in favor. We did it again in 2024, rallied that same education and advertising PAC to pass a $103 million road bond. I think it's imperative to know that our four associations were greatly involved with educating the public on exactly what they were getting and why. It's extremely important. Below, I want, I put these in red because I want you guys to see exactly what was running in the background sucking the life out of our volunteers, our Lubbock volunteers, city council, city staff. These items were all running in the background, and we came up. Can I have some more time?
The same two minutes I granted, Mr. Payne.
2016 through 2018, we did the CPAC. Of that, I will note, it did come out of it to advise road bonds just as much as it did impact fees. 2019 through 2025, UDC is still ongoing. Major, major time crunch. I do want to, I do want to thank Mont McClendon, Terry Holman, Corey Dillon, Victoria Whitehead, Kristen Sager, Robbie Wallace, and Chris Berry for getting this across the goal line. There were several moments in the time that the UDC was dead, and those individuals picked this up and took it across the goal line. 2019 through 2025, SEAC allotted over 200 meetings inside city council and outside the city hall, just in private meetings. Not a very good return on investment, only $12 million. So you can also see 14-year gap there as a result with no road bonds, with all these ongoing distractions, and no one really working on a real, real plan of how we're going to get ahead. Meantime, our three local school districts, LISD, FISD, Cooper ISD, passed $2 billion in bonds, $2 billion in voter-approved bonds. I say all this and I show all this because if we mirror what we have done in the last 15 years, it will not be good. Even if we only pass $300 million in road bonds in the next 15 years, it will not be good. If we mimic any of these red lines in the next 15 years, it will not be good. We have to have a real plan. Going forward, this is merely a suggestion from our four associations and our, it is merely a roadmap. Quickly, 10-person committee consists of one member per district, two additional, a city engineer, and Heather Keister. She is fantastic. She knows our roadway infrastructure inside and out.
You have 30 seconds left.
Quarterly meetings. We will present them to council. The great thing about this, you guys can accept our findings. You could deny them. You can edit them, or you can act on these quarterly reports. We're going to aim to make these projects beneficial and equitable to the needs of all districts. We need a strategic 15-year planning, plan for rollouts of future road bonds. You ask anybody right now, we don't know. We don't know when the next one is. We have to have a 15-year plan. We have to create a real-time bond status webpage. You ask anybody, what's going on with the 24 projects right now? Really, there's only a handful of people in city hall that know. But we need a real-time page that Dr. Wilson can pull it up. She can see where this project is. Mr. Gashin can pull it up. He can see where a project is. To end with, we'd be, this will be a standing committee consistent to a fluid council, and we will continue to refine and improve our PAC education campaigns. Mayor, I want to thank you for your continued campaign promises for pro-growth, pro-business, and doing away with these impact fees so we can get on with life and get on with a real plan. Lastly, I don't know how many times I have to say it. Developers do not pay impact fees. I've never paid an impact fee. I never will. Lubbock citizens pay impact taxes. It's all rolled down to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the citizen comments. Thank you, each one of you who've come and prepared your comments for us and your presentations as well. We appreciate that very much. I think everyone here understands this is an important issue. We all take it seriously, and it's something we're, we've given a lot of thought to. I think all of us have. So let's begin our regular session now. We have two items on our agenda, 3.1, 3.2. The first is a second reading of amendments to our UDC, ordinance number 2025 dash, I think that's an O, 0095, approving amendments 1 through 30, and numbers 32 through 56, to the Unified Development Code. If anyone wishes, we can have another presentation of this from Ms. Sager. Does anyone wish to have another presentation from Ms. Sager? I don't see anybody asking for that. All right? With that being said, then I will call for a motion to approve this on a second reading. Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? I see none. All in favor, let it be known by saying, do we need to do this as a recorded vote? Nope. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. That passes. All right, moving on for item 3.2, the second reading of this ordinance. Consider ordinance number 2025 dash 0096, amending Chapter 41, impact fees of the City of Lubbock Code of Ordinances with regard to roadway impact fees. So we don't need a further presentation, I don't believe, on this unless anybody requests it. And I see none. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Mrs., Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to apologize to the citizens because more than likely, you will be facing a tax increase. And that is unfortunate. I originally asked, and I asked the folks that, you know, have been campaigning for this, to keep it as it was. This is not a good time for the public to incur more taxes. And yet, that's what we're going to do. I get it. We have to work, though, for the greater good. And I appreciate all the work from all parties. But for me, I don't think that now is the time when we have had losses in sales tax and property taxes. This is not a good time. And although we don't think $14 million is really important, I, God, if I had even a million, that'd be great for me. But when it impacts all the citizens now, whereas impact fees is only for certain people. And what really concerned me was that recently, as we were reviewing budget, we also saw that we were raising fees for some areas and parks, from streets, from fire. And it was for those individuals needing to use those things. So it doesn't impact everybody. It's as needed. And that's what impact fees is as well. And so, you know, I just encourage the public to make sure that you let your districts know that it is disappointing that we will be increasing taxes to them when it should be something that is just benefiting some. Those folks should pay for it. And I get it. We pay for everything collectively, but in this particular case, I am completely against it. And it is, as Mr. Payne said, stop draining money from the pockets of the people. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I see none. Then all, and we don't have, do we have to do this as a recorded vote? We do not have to do this as a recorded, okay. So, okay. Mr. Rose?
I just want to clarify what we're voting on here. Is this what we passed last time at the zero?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Protim has called for a recorded vote. Mr. Harris, though, I've, before we go, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I just want to, Mr. Rose? The question that he asked, I didn't hear you. So this is what, we lost the vote on the impact fees for the other day?
This, yeah. So the ordinance should be in your backup that has been, that was passed the last council meeting, setting the both maximum and the actual collection rate of the impact fees at zero.
Okay.
So, yes, to answer your question, this is the ordinance you voted against last time. It's to set the rate at zero.
Oh, set the rate, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mayor Protim has called for a recorded vote, so if you'll bring that up. And everyone has cast their vote. The vote is 5 to 2. All right? So that amended, we call it the amended ordinance, the ordinance, setting it back to zero, passes 5 to 2. All right? No other items on our agenda. With that, our meeting is now adjourned.